Thank you, everyone. I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. I'm going to read a statement here that we have prepared. And so please bear with me. And I want to first welcome everyone for being on the call. We have, I think, 652 attendees and that list is continuing to grow. And we have all of our school board members here in Dr. Walts and a number of our staff. So in response to the emergent critical issues raised by the COVID-19 pandemic, the Prince William County School Board must now conduct its board meetings by electronic means in order to ensure the health and safety of board members, staff, students, and members of the public. These emergency meetings will be conducted for the near future under the procedures provided by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the emergency ordinance enacted by the Prince William County Board of Supervisors on March 31, 2020. The school board must limit its agenda to those items necessary to address the emergency created by the pandemic and/or to ensure continuity of government in the operations of the school division. Unfortunately, these restrictions, as well as limitations on social distancing and technological obstacles mean that the citizen comment period, which is part of the school board's regular meetings, must be temporarily suspended. In the interim, school board wants to encourage the public to continue to provide the school board with your invaluable input through other means such as emails and social media. Our email addresses can be found on the website at www.pwcs.edu. Before closing, I would like to express appreciation to our teachers, administrators, and other staff members who are all very passionate about our students and their needs. They are meeting frequently to develop and implement plans to address our students' needs. I would also like to express my appreciation to our food service workers who are serving more than 10,000 free meals daily to our students and to all other essential staff who are performing a variety of tasks from cleaning the buildings to delivering mail, paying bills, and ensuring our employees. I would also like to thank our families for their patience and support as we work to develop instructional plans for our students. This is an unprecedented situation that will require creative and measured response. And I know that Prince William County, and I know the Prince William County community will rise to the challenge. I want to also thank Madam Chair Ann Wheeler and the Board of County Supervisors for their efforts, their support, and helping keeping us safe. I want to finally also thank the school board for working very hard with, and with, and Dr. Walts, Superintendent Dr. Walts, and Governor Northam for addressing the school closure in a timely manner. I think this has, if you think about it, we're over 14 days from the time schools closed. This would have been the time which somebody could have contracted the infection. It would have happened. I think our numbers here in the county when it comes to students and staff are extremely low. And I think the success of closing the schools has been very effective. So next, that was our opening. So I want to, you know, again, wish the public a safe and healthy evening. But we are now going to move to the Pledge of Allegiance. And so I think we will stand where we are in our house and, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and justice for all. Excellent. So next will be our approval for the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. I will call on Ms. Williams to please read the motion.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Latif. Let me get the motion. So the recommended motion is that I move that Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda and that the Prince William County School Board approve the agenda items that are necessary to address the COVID-19 disaster and ramifications on the Prince William County Schools and/or are necessary to ensure the continuity of government as the usual meeting procedures cannot be implemented safely or practically at this time.
Do I have a second?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie seconds the motion. Any discussion? Okay, so we're going to do a roll call for the vote. And you all heard the motion. I will first call on Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson, Adele Jackson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Ms. Jackson, let the record record, note that Ms. Jackson voted yes, or yay, or aye. Ms. Jessie?
Yes, yay.
Let the record note that Ms. Jessie voted yes. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how would you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpur, Ms. Williams, let the record show Ms. Williams votes yes. And Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And for the public, be patient with us. We're doing voting by roll call just to ensure legal compliance with the rules and regulations for having electronic meeting. So that motion passes. We will now move on to the resolution adopting procedures for electronic public meetings and public hearings. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams, would you read the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve a resolution adopting procedures for electronic public meetings and public hearings consistent with the Prince William County emergency.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. And just for everyone to understand, with the school board has worked very hard on this, this, this motion for the last few weeks and even prior to that. And so we will go ahead and I will call the roll call for the vote. We will do it again in the same order. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Let the record show Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Let the record show Ms. Jessie votes yes. Latif, I vote yes. Let the record show that. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Let the record show Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jen Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Let the record show Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. And Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Excellent. Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. So that motion passes unanimously. We will move on to 5.01, which is the approval of policy 139, school board member participating, participation in meetings by electronic communication. Ms. Williams, would you read the motion?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Dr. Latif. The, the motion is as follows. I move that Prince William County School Board, by two-thirds majority of those present and voting, waive a second reading and adopt proposed policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communications.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. So again, this is another topic. Yes, Ms. Wall.
Yes, I had a comment, or I mean, I guess a question. I was looking at Section 2 eligibility, Section A and B, and I know, noticed that there is a limit of two meetings for participation under Section B. But I am interested in the idea of changing that to a larger number and applying that limit of meetings to apply to both A and B. But I don't know if there's, if this is the right time to discuss that.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to address this. The, the limit in B is imposed by law. So the, so that has to be two. But there's no barrier on imposing a similar limit or a different limit to, to the use of subsection A. That would be the medical emergency. That's up to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
And, and I suspect McGowan, we can, we can adjust this accordingly if things change and as the governor changes or new executive orders are issued?
No, this, this, this policy 139, the section we're talking about is the, is not the emergency exception. This is the exception that allows three, up to three board members to participate electronically where there is a physical quorum assembled. And this is customarily used when somebody's ill and can't attend a board meeting physically, but can, can participate electronically. So this was a proposal we had on the agenda last fall, which we're bringing back now for adoption in light of the obviously imperative need to have something like this.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I would just like to thank Mary for her, all of her hard work on this. It was, as she just pointed out, something that we had thought about with the previously sat board and something that I know specifically, Mary worked really hard with me on, trying to understand. There's a lot of, so the public is aware, just in case they did not hear, Ms. McGowan, there's a lot of legal compliance involved in this policy because I, like Ms. Wall, wanted to make some edits and Ms. McGowan politely informed me that we could not do that per the law. But I just really think it's important to just take this moment to recognize her for all the hard work that she's done. Not only on, from working on it from last fall, but with all the recent updates because of the emergency that we're in now. So thank you, Ms. McGowan. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan, and thank you, Ms. Marshawn. Our Division Council has worked really hard, as, as the entire staff has with the incredible amount of issues that we're facing right now. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I would like to go through the roll call and call for the vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how would you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Um, I vote yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how would you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how would you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. That is, again, unanimous. We will move on to 5.02 on the agenda, which is the temporary waiver of Section 2 of Policy 134, Citizen Participation, relating to citizen comment time. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that due to the state of emergency accompanying the COVID-19 pandemic and the need for school board to conduct its meetings electronically, the Prince William County School Board waive Section 2 of Policy 134, Citizen Participation, to remove citizen comment time from its agenda pending resumption of in-person board meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilk seconds the motion. Any discussion? Ms. Zargarpur?
I know that the public comments are very important, and I've been getting a lot of emails, so continue to send your concerns. But we by no means want to make this a permanent thing. It's only because of this situation.
Excellent. Any, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr., Ms. Williams?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to echo Mrs. Zargarpur's comments and just express it's not just for Ms. Zargarpur, but for all of us and any constituent, that they're just perfectly clear on this, that we're still open and available to meet their needs or to handle any questions or concerns that they may have and that if they're unsure, all of our information is listed on the Prince William County Schools website and under the About Us tab for board information.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie?
I also would like to comment that we are available. And also to note that tonight we have 739 attendees. So I'm really pleased that the public is interested in what's happening with our school board. It's uplifting to see this. And that we are always available by email or by phone, that you can contact us if you have any concerns. And we will relay those concerns to the person that, the, the person that you, the issue that you're addressing.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Fantastic. So I would like to call the roll call again. We will start with Ms. Jackson. How do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Latif, I vote yes. Let the record record that. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Excellent. We will now move, and again, that, that passes unanimously. We will now move to 5.03 on the agenda, which is the approval of a board poll done on March 24, 2020. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams, would you like to read this one as well?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the poll of March 24, 2020, specifically whether the Prince William County School Board should convene an emergency meeting by electronic communications at 4:00 PM on Thursday, March 26, 2020, to discuss with the superintendent urgent issues related to the COVID-19 crisis and the closure of Prince William County's public schools.
So I will second that motion. And just to let the public know as part of a discussion, there was some consideration last week to call an emergent meeting last week. And the board decided to not have the meeting last week and rather in lieu of just putting most of those items on for this scheduled meeting. So we had a board poll, so unless there's further discussion, we'll go through to validate that poll. And all we're doing with this vote is saying that we are, Ms. McGowan, maybe correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, if we all vote yes, it just means we validate the last poll, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. You're, you're voting to confirm the votes that you asserted on the poll.
Correct. You're not voting the same as in that poll. You're voting to confirm the votes. So
you're voting, you're, you're reflecting your vote in that poll.
Oh, okay, correct. Okay. So I'm sorry. So please, everyone vote the same way you voted last week. So we'll do the roll call. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Jackson votes no. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Jessie votes no. Ms., Dr. Latif, I voted yes. Let the record reflect that. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
That, that was a no, Ms. Ralston, on your last week's vote.
I stay with it.
Okay, stay with it. Okay, great. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Ms. Wall votes no. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. And, and that will reflect what happened last week, which was a four to four vote, which means the motion did not pass, and that is why we did not have a meeting last week. So thank you all for, for doing that. We will move next to the 5.04, the approval of the next board poll item, which was March 27. A motion is in order for this. Ms. Williams, would you like to read that motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sure will. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the poll of March 27, 2020, requesting $5 million in emergency funding from the Prince William County Board of Supervisors to provide computers to Prince William County School students for the purpose of instruction during the COVID-19 crisis and further authorize the chairman at large to execute and provide the Board of Supervisors with a letter on behalf of the school board.
Okay, great. So do I have a second for that?
Second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Just to summarize this, and we can have a discussion if you, if you like. The Prince William County School Board unanimously, unanimously voted last week by a poll taken on March 27, that the board would like to make a formal request of the County Board of Supervisors. And, and so we can, we can open that up for discussion. Any, any thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie?
Are we discussing the vote or are we discussing what took place at the last board supervisors being in their requests for more, more detailed information?
Yeah, so I think that brings up a good point, Ms. Jessie. I think basically we're confirming our poll, but I think it's important to note that the Board of County Supervisors took this up briefly yesterday and basically said that they would like more information regarding our needs. And so I think as a school board, we should probably provide that so that they know exactly what our needs are and why we're asking. And so I think they will be sending a formal request over back to us, and I think we will then take it from there. Does that sound reasonable, everybody?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know that Superintendent is also going to discuss this issue. But I think that some items for discussion or from our point of view is our, our, our budget, our plan for budget expenditure and the need for some type of survey and content priorities, reading math. Those are some items that I think we need to discuss in that plan. And I, I can get with you later. But I have a list of items that I think is important for us as a board to discuss and to include in our plan for the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
Um, I also just wanted to make quick mention. There's seemed to be a little bit of confusion in the, I received from public response about us requesting this money because there was a previous eBackpack program, which I'm sure the superintendent can go into further detail if necessary. But I just wanted to let the public know that that is not the same thing that we're doing now. And that program was several years ago. It was a state program. It was not a Prince William County Schools program. It was something we opted in to participate and is a completely separate venture. Just so that, hopefully that will clear up some confusion. And I just also want to make note, since we were talking about the relationship between the school board and the Board of County Supervisors, that it's important for the public to understand, as well as our counterparts on the board, that at least I can verify for the time that I've been on the board, when we have made requests from the Board of County Supervisors, the school board and the school division has adhered to those requests. We have not made any changes. We do exactly as we agreed upon doing, and I think that that's an important point to bring up. So the public is aware, because there's often talk of, well, maybe the school division will do this or that. But I just want to assure the public that if this does come to fruition, that we hold good to our end of our word and we will do exactly what we are requesting to do with any monies that we request outside and above and beyond the school board budget. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I add another point?
Ms. Jessie, yes.
Yes. And I've talked to members of the Board of Supervisors. They were concerned that we did not submit a plan to them. And I think that my sense from the Board of Supervisors that they're anxious to support us. They too think that this digital equity plan is important. As you know, we have a plan right now, but it doesn't include all those students and it's a four-year plan. So I think, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for being so responsive to us. I do think that they need to have something in writing, a little bit more detail. And I also want to thank all board members who supported this plan. I think there are also issues we need to deal with when it comes to equity, when you have special groups or subgroups, special there are a lot of items that need to be discussed. I've been reading other plans and I know the Superintendent is going to address some of those. So I don't want to go into detail, but it is a big issue and I, I want to thank the Board of Supervisor for being so responsive to us.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wall?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of this idea of getting more technology into the hands of our students as quickly as possible. I think it's really important. I think we need, it's, it's one of the places, you know, this is an emergency, but it's also part of our longstanding plan. And I think it's important that the public understand that. It's not that we're just having a knee-jerk reaction to the crisis, but that it was all along intended that we would move to this direction with our resources and getting technology into the hands of our students to increase our student success and our student learning and kind of bring us into the digital age. That's a lot of the ways that, you know, colleges are going with authentic work product and everything else. So even though this is an emergency, it is part of our plan. We just would like to accelerate it. And I think it's important to note that.
Excellent. Any other thoughts?
I, I just want to add, from the education sector and my line of work and what we've been doing since COVID-19 has occurred and closing states' educational institutions across this country, it's amazing to me how far behind we are with one-to-one digital equity and virtual learning with getting kids access one-to-one throughout the entire county. When we have districts in rural Indiana and Ohio or ones in the less affluent suburbs that are having no issue with the continuity of education and virtual learning right now. And I think about where we are and, you know, and our ranking when it comes to wealthiest counties in the United States, and we don't have this yet fully implemented. To me, like my colleague Ms. Wall said, you know, echoing this sentiment, we were already putting this in our budget moving forward. And so it's now trying to, in a sense, catch up and do as best we can to make sure we can continue instruction for the remainder of the school year. So that's where I fell on this. And it became more of a stark reality, you know, looking at districts across this country and how they're quickly adapting to this, you know, this virtual distance learning environment.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all. Ms. Zargarpur?
Yeah, um, I think as long as people also understand that with this rollout of technology was also going to be a rollout of training for teachers. And I think it's equally important to make sure our students understand expectations in a virtual environment. And being ready for what comes to us in the fall, being able to roll this out and, and get everybody ready to go should we need to shut down for any reason, whether it is a virus or weather or, or for any other reason, then it is an easier implementation, like Mr. Wilk said, in districts that have already done this. So I'd be interested in looking at what the best practices are for all, all subjects, all grades that, that are already being done in other places. How we can train teachers and students because they're going to need to learn how to use the technology as well. Expectations for, for parents and families when these devices are in the hands of children. And I know our, our IT people have been thinking about all these things, but I just want to make sure to reiterate it because people, I, I think I've had some constituents who've expressed, expressed the concern that we're just going to hand a computer and voila, there's learning. But we know there's far more to it. So looking forward to all these, people seeing what all these plans are.
Excellent. Ms. Jackson?
I, I just wanted to reiterate something that Mr. Wilk said because in reviewing other plans, it just seems that there are, there were plans for teachers. There's teacher training. There's paying for personnel. How do we do that? Selecting the content areas, what content is going to be reading, math, science, or social studies? And I guess my question is, the Board of Supervisors is having another meeting. Are we planning to develop a plan to submit to them in response to their requests prior to that next meeting? Where are we on that? Would you be able to answer that or Dr. Walts?
Let me, let me, let me go to Ms. Jackson next, and then Ms. Ralston, and then we'll hear from Dr. Walts on that. Ms. Jackson, if you have a question or thought?
I just wanted to briefly say I echo the sentiments that everybody else has said. I've received a number of emails, some in support, but also in general, like curiosity about the plan and how it relates to the current digital equity plan. And I look forward to seeing, you know, how this is, will unfold in the near future. And also concerns about internet access and how that impacts students' ability to access the, the computers.
Ms. Ralston?
I'm a big skip. You can skip me this time.
Okay, okay, great. And then, and then I will just answer a little bit of what Ms. Jessie said, then we'll ask Dr. Walts to comment if he has any comments. But it, whatever the Board of County Supervisors sends over as a request, I, I think we'll all be happy to provide them the information we have. I think to, to emphasize a little bit about what Ms. Williams and Ms. Wall have said earlier, we have a plan. The plan is in place, part of our technology improvement plan. And I think we can share that with them. And, and that'll be important. Also, understanding for them what the costs will be. And I think that's very important. And I know Dr. Walts and his staff will, will, will help us work on that. And so we'll wait to hear from them and their formal requests, and we will try and we will try to get them as much information as they need, Ms. Jesse. I think that is critical. Dr. Walz? Dr. Walz, do you have any comments?
He's just stopped.
Okay, yes. Thank you very much. Chairman Latif, you're exactly correct. We have the plan in place now that simply advances the plan. And we're aware of the questions that have already been raised. We will wait for those written questions, and we have already been in touch with the county on that. So as soon as we receive their questions, we will work to answer each and every one of them and get back to them as soon as possible. And of course, the board would be, both boards would be able to have those answers.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Thank you to the entire school board for how quickly you worked and how much time you spent thinking of ways to address this issue. And hopefully, we'll be able to move forward with the County Board of Supervisors. And if not, we're gonna, you know, we have our own plan that we have to work through, and I think that'll be important for us to figure out what we're going to do next. So let's go ahead and confirm the board poll. I will take the roll call again. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Let the record reflect that. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes. Let the record reflect. Dr. Latif, I will vote yes. Please allow the record to reflect that. Sorry about that. And then Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Sargapour, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Sargapour votes yes. That passes unanimously, as did the letter that was sent out. And I think we'll move on to the next which is a request from Dr. Walz, our Superintendent, on the update regarding our pandemic-related issues. Do we have a motion? I don't think we have a motion for this. Is this really an action item or just an update, Dr. Walz?
We do have a recommendation for--
Okay, why don't you read the recommendation, Ms. Williams?
Sure. It's that the Prince William County School Board receive an update from the Superintendent on urgent pandemic issues or related issues to include, and there's a listing, which would be graduation requirement ceremonies, continuing of learning, VDOE guidance and curriculum, grading and grading policy and regulation, one-to-one computers, and distance learning, Virginia Star-- possible calendar implications, summer school, changes to the 2020 and 2021 school year, food service, distribution, and status update.
Do I have a second for this discussion?
Second.
Ms. Jesse seconds the discussion, and then I guess, Ms. McGowan, do we actually vote on this, or do we just go to have Dr. Walz give us the update?
This is just information.
Okay, so this is just information. Dr. Walz?
Thank you and good evening again, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Williams, and school board members. I would like to begin this evening by acknowledging the unprecedented and remarkable time in which we are living. It cannot be understated that we are truly in a life-or-death situation. In fact, the President has said, in a best-case scenario, we may have as many as 100,000 to 200,000 deaths nationally. Since the beginning of this crisis created by the global COVID-19 pandemic, my highest priority and that of our staff has been to ensure the safety and health of our students, staff, and families. Our hearts go out to those families in our area and across the country who have been impacted by the COVID-19 virus, both in terms of health and economically, especially those who have lost loved ones, such as Loudoun County Public Schools losing Susan Rokas, a longtime and beloved teacher. We are blessed to announce that at this time, we have not lost any PWCS employees, students, parents, or guardians to this horrible disease, to the best of our knowledge, and we pray that that continues. As you know, on March 13th, I ordered the closure of Prince William County Public Schools to students and staff through spring break. My announcement was soon followed by the Governor of Virginia's order to close schools through March 27. On March 23rd, the Governor announced the closure of schools through the end of the academic year. Given the challenging period in which we are living, it feels as though that announcement was a lifetime ago. However, it is very important to remember the Governor announced the closure of schools through the end of the academic year only just over a week ago. Tonight, I will address our actions to date and discuss our plans for the remainder of the school year. Please note that I will address all of the items on the board agenda, but not in the specific order listed. I will also provide a copy of my remarks to everyone, and I believe you should have those already. I want to thank the remarkable achievements accomplished by our Prince William County School employees since the announcement on March 13th. Staff have been working around the clock since before March 13th. A special thank you to Denise Heidner, who led our pandemic planning and response team, along with the entire Superintendent's staff, who have been working tirelessly to adjust all of our operations in a very short period of time. On Friday, the 13th, we saw remarkable achievements by our schools to equip students as rapidly as possible to be prepared for the closing. For example, schools were giving out computers that they had available to their students, and some schools emptied their entire library to ensure students had reading materials for the closure. I want to thank our custodial crews who came in to work that weekend after the closure and cleaned our schools for several days to ensure that they would be clean and safe, and our employees and contractors who are involved in school construction. Additionally, our food service staff, working with our school teams, have accomplished monumental work in a very short period of time. Since we closed March 13th, our food service staff, led by Al Shiroki and Adam Russo, Director, have supported our school staff and have provided over 118,000 to-go meals in 19 distribution sites throughout the county. I know that some have suggested the use of buses. We have researched this idea and have chosen not to pursue that for safety and health concerns. And looking at this model in another nearby school division, we have seen students crowded together in neighborhoods waiting for the bus arrival. This is a serious health concern because it doesn't honor the social and physical distance that are being asked for by our leaders and health officials and would endanger students, staff, and families. However, our food service staff continues to monitor usage and target underserved areas, which have included continuously adding new locations and expanding the hours. We have plans to add three more locations beginning this coming Monday, Potomac View Elementary, Saunders Middle, and River Oaks Elementary, again on April 6th. We also want to thank Delegate Danica Rowan and our local congressional delegation for leading the push to eliminate a nationwide USDA requirement that students had to be present in order to get their meals. Thanks to our local leaders, this rule has been waived nationally, and now we can provide meals to parents or guardians who provide a list of their children and appropriate ID. This allows children who may have a health concern to stay safely at home. Speaking of student health, I want to acknowledge our nurses, who were ready to lead efforts to address this pandemic. Within two business days of our closure, our nurses had coordinated a medication pickup for all families. Additionally, I am proud to announce tonight that our student health team, in coordination with Don Davis, our Executive Director of the Spark Education Foundation, will be providing a few thousand surplus masks to local hospitals, including surgical and N95 masks. We support our local health provider partners and applaud their efforts to help our entire community during this pandemic. Ms. Davis and Spark are also working with those individuals who have expressed an interest in donating time, expertise, or money to the school division. Dozens of people have pledged to help, and more than $3,500 have been donated in just the past week. Also, as part of our Spark work, the Virginia Star Computer Refurbishment Plan, which is coordinated statewide through our Spark, will be working with schools to provide hundreds of computers to families in need. Supporting our students and families' physical and mental health during this time is critical. I want to thank our counselors for doing a remarkable job in adapting quickly to support our students. Within just two business days of closing, our counseling staff developed a means to provide emotional support for students during this stressful time. Students can email our counseling staff at studentsupportservices@pwcs.edu to receive virtual support. Our counselors and other school-based mental health staff will respond to any student who needs assistance. I care deeply about our students and their emotional well-being during this time away from school, and we want you to know that we are only an email away. Perhaps some of our most devastated students are high school seniors. I personally shared a video message to all of our students to reassure them, as I know this was an incredible disappointment. As I said to our seniors, if they were on track to graduate, they will graduate. If they needed extra help to graduate, we will work with them to get the support they need. Our counselors will be reviewing every senior's grades and will be reaching out to those who may need additional support. I know our seniors are disappointed that in-person graduations in May and June are canceled as a direct result of the Governor's order, also that no more than 10 students or 10 people can be gathered in one place. I want to thank the community for the many creative ideas that we have received. Our high school principals have met and have been working together virtually to discuss potential alternatives, including virtual options or potentially an in-person graduation in early August. However, we will need to wait and see how the pandemic progresses until we settle on any in-person option in coordination with our healthcare community and our elected officials. Beyond supporting our students, I want to thank the HR and finance staff who have provided and moved mountains incredibly quickly, all while adhering to physical distancing requirements. From the first day of closure, we announced that we would pay all active employees. Our staff have worked incredibly hard to ensure we are consistent with evolving federal and state laws and guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. We have managed to continue to pay, hire, interview, and support our employees, all from a virtual setting. Again, it's important to note, this shift was done nearly overnight. Recognizing our critical role supporting the community, including our local businesses, we have also implemented a plan to ensure that bookkeepers at every school and central office are collecting those bills and paying them on time. I want to thank them for their hard work. I also want to thank our instructional staff, who have made remarkable achievements in a very short period. This includes all of our teachers, our principals, and other school administrators, and our central office, student, and professional learning staff. In fact, our Supervisor of Social Studies, Mr. Jeff Gerben, has been asked to help the Virginia Department of Education and serve on a statewide continuity of learning task force. As I mentioned earlier, on March 13th, our instructional staff, both at the division level and in schools, worked to provide learning resources for students to take and use at home. Five business days after closure, we launched a PWCS home learning page, including online academic resources, suggested free apps, online activity ideas, optional daily schedules, parent tips, and in fact, many of those can be done using a phone. And we have gotten lots of feedback on this, and I just want to share one quick message that I received from a parent. This was an email sent to his child's pre-AP algebra trig teacher, and I will protect the names. "I am Yosef. I am Yosef's dad. Just wanted to say again that you were doing an awesome job." Again, this is to his teacher. "Your energy, outreach, is unlike any we've experienced in his 10-plus years of schooling, and we are very appreciative. I'm sure there are others, but this experience is first for us, and not just now, but all year. Rest assured, we've remained structured in our approach during this time in terms of schedule and the resources provided by the PWCS and others, including Google Classroom and Delta Math, have been very helpful. Thank you." And then the parent. "I am now pleased to provide further details to you regarding our grading and instructional plans for the remainder of the school year. We are rolling our plan out, starting with my update to you, the school board, this evening. After tonight, we will be working with principals, starting tomorrow, then our teachers, then families, to communicate these details this week. The next phase will immediately follow. Before I get into the details, I want to again stress the point. We are in the middle of a global pandemic, and people are dying locally and nationally. My highest priority remains the physical and mental health of students and staff. It is simply not fair nor realistic to expect our teachers, students, and administrators or families to replicate the exact school day at home. I want our teachers to know. I want our students to know and our staff to know. That is okay. We are all in this together. We will work together to do the best we can to support one another, and that is what matters. So let me outline for you our learning and grading plan for all of our students through the end of the academic year. First, let me discuss grading. Given this remarkable time we are in, it is my expectation that we provide students with as much latitude and grace as possible. It is important to note that the Virginia Department of Education has recommended not grading any material provided after March 13th. So we will be issuing grading directives tomorrow with this in mind. Although there are not grades, I just want to remind everyone that we are still encouraging feedback, and the work that students do can be used to improve their grade. So here are the details. Marking periods 1, 2, and 3 will be graded. The sum of the grade for each of the three quarters will be divided by 3 to determine the final grade. But in order to maximize the flexibility for students to raise their grades, we will extend the third quarter until April 24, 2020, and students may continue to redo assignments or retake assessments assigned prior to March 13, 2020. Students' grades will only be able to go up from where they were on March 13. Again, consistent with Virginia Department of Education grading guidance, the fourth quarter will be ungraded and remain a period of optional distance learning for students both online and off. All students will be able to continue to submit optional work that will support completion of graduation requirements and/or demonstrate mastery of a subject. Consistent with our grading regulation to ensure that the final grade accurately represents the student's achievement and progress, the final grade may be modified by the teacher to improve the student's grade up until the end of the entire academic year. Spring graduation status will be finalized for all seniors as of May 29, 2020. All other students will continue to learn online and through other offline distance learning resources, including phones, through June 12. So now let me outline how we will support teachers and students to achieve this vision. Our continuity of instruction plan has six parts. The focus is on supporting our teachers, students, and their families. As I mentioned, our first phase was on March 13th, when we sent books, materials, instruments, and so forth home for the closure of schools to the best of our ability. Let me pause here for a moment and say that I know many students and staff want to get into the building to retrieve personal items. However, the safety and health of our-- However, the safety and health of our students, staff, and community is my highest priority, especially when COVID-19 cases are concurrently and currently increasing exponentially. With this in mind, at this time, I cannot open our buildings to staff or students wishing to pick up belongings. In order to prevent community spread of COVID-19, PWCS is following the directive of the Governor of Virginia, the guidance of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as other state and local health officials, which is to stay at home as much as possible at this time. Allowing access into classrooms or lockers increases health risk for everyone and would require greater areas of the building to be reclaimed by staff. The buildings are secure, clean, and the items are safely locked. We will continue to monitor the pandemic and adjust these restrictions as needed in the future. Again, as I mentioned, our second phase of the learning plan was the development of the PWCS Home Learning webpage. In the past week, we have focused on our third phase of learning, which is preparing our teachers to do more instruction from home. We know that we will need to deliver instruction primarily online through the remainder of the year, with additional learning resources provided to those students without technology. We need to first equip all of our teachers in all subject areas with the tools and content necessary to be successful. To support our teachers, our department chairs, lead teachers, and supervising administrators were provided resources and encouraged to share with their colleagues in their schools. Virtual professional development has been conducted for teacher leaders to share materials, resources, and professional learning opportunities developed and organized to support them. Content and program supervisors have developed a calendar of virtual support sessions for teachers by grade level and by subject. Additionally, our instructional coaches and instructional technology staff have been developing virtual instruction best practice videos for teachers to reference. Instructional technology staff are working with principals to ensure that every teacher has a computer with internet at home, as we had hundreds who did not. In order to make online learning more consistent and easier for students and teachers, we will be deploying an online learning management system called Canvas to all teachers. This system will enable teachers to share lesson plans and integrate digital tools. For example, discovery education to name one. This will also tie into the hub to help teachers with their classroom management. Much of this was part of our Digital Equity Plan, presented to the board a few weeks ago during our FY 2021 budget work sessions. We are now accelerating this multi-year plan into just a few weeks. While we have focused on professional development and resources, it is important to note that most of our teachers have already began updating students daily via existing tools and class pages on various and various technology platforms. Beyond supporting our teachers with the technology for online distance learning as well, to this end, I am pleased to announce that using a combination of existing technology funding and flex funding, we have placed an order for more than 15,500 HP touchscreen laptops for our students. We needed to place this order immediately as we received word that a surge in buying of computers by schools across the country could make receiving them difficult. We sincerely appreciate the school board collaboration with the Board of County Supervisors to seek additional funding for more computers, and if that is achieved, we will order additional computers to support more students immediately. While we expect to get these laptops into students' hands by May, we are not waiting until then. Our IT department is working around the clock to enable our business and learning functions online. They will be surveying families via telephone in home languages, starting with high schools, to determine any families in need of devices at home. The IT department will then work to use any laptops or tablets in schools currently to fulfill the immediate need. As we are able to help students without devices, we will work down through grade levels as far as possible, depending upon the resources we have. The IT department is also working to make outdoor Wi-Fi hotspots available at as many schools as possible, so students could log in by simply driving into the school parking area. We also will promote low-cost options for internet and provide home hotspots as we are able. Upon teachers' return from spring break, we will implement Phase 4 and 5, focused on home learning and our virtual schoolhouse. At the elementary level, principals will develop a weekly schedule that assigns each subject 60 minutes of combined review instruction and student learning time per week, with one 60-minute block available for designated virtual office hours and one 60-minute block for school counseling or other selected class or activity. At the middle level, principals will develop a weekly schedule that assigns each subject 90 minutes of combined review instruction and student learning time per week, with one 90-minute block available for designated office hours and one 90-minute block for school counseling or other selected class or activity. At the high school, principals will develop a weekly schedule that assigns each subject 120 minutes of combined review instruction and student learning per week, with one 120-minute block available for designated office hours and one 120-minute block for school counseling or other selected class or activity. Teachers and counselors will advertise their virtual office hours and the method for reaching a teacher or counselor at the specified time for academic help and support. Schools will be required to adhere to the time allotments and communicate the schedule they decide out to their communities in a variety of ways and in the required languages. Teachers will continue to support students in improving their third-quarter grades by redoing assignments and retaking assessments, which are assigned or administered prior to March 13. We will conduct virtual training on Canvas for our instructional staff. All teachers will continue uploading content review, instruction, lessons, and assignments, as well as learning resources and activities according to the advertised Phase 4 Virtual Schoolhouse and Rotation Guidance. Teachers already using platforms other than the class webpages will continue to do so. Teachers can assign or provide feedback, along with continued guidance and support for students on extended offline learning personal projects. On May 1, seniors with all graduation requirements satisfied will be declared to have met all graduation requirements. Seniors with remaining requirements will be granted an extension for credit recovery. In May and June, we will implement our final Phase 6, where we will begin K-12 student instruction using the Canvas Learning Management System. On May 4, third-quarter report cards will be distributed. We will continue to provide at-home distant learning options through Canvas for kindergarten through 11th grade, using either personally-owned or division-distributed devices, as well as through offline correspondence. On June 5, seniors who have remaining graduation requirements will complete submissions of remaining work. Finally, on June 12, K-12 instruction concludes, and diplomas will be mailed to graduates. As I mentioned earlier, we will continue to seek methods of celebrating our graduates, either virtually or hopefully in person. Teachers of students with disabilities and teachers of students who are English learners will offer virtual support at specific communicated times, as well as ensure they are fulfilling the ongoing expectation that they continue to co-plan for supports, scaffolds, and accommodations for their students. In support of the full range of learners, gifted education teachers will also do the same. While every support given to students in a face-to-face setting may not be possible, it remains our intention and expectation to make a good-faith effort to provide every virtual distance learning support possible to our students during this unprecedented time. As before the closure, EL teachers are expected to continue to co-plan and co-teach with their general education and special education colleagues as appropriate to support the ongoing learning of EL students. EL students will continue to receive English language development support that focuses on reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Our Office of EL Programs and Services have prepared has prepared virtual resources to help our teachers in supporting and staying connected to our EL students and families during this time of distant learning. The specialists within the Office of EL Programs and Services are holding virtual office hours to further support the continuity of instruction and learning for our EL students. Additionally, special education teachers continue to collaborate with general education teachers to provide support for our students with disabilities. Related service providers are collaborating with general education and special education teachers to provide overall and/or student-specific resources and activities. The Office of Special Education will continue to explore how our related service providers can best support our students while complying with the governor's stay-at-home order. Case managers and special education service providers will continue to communicate with parents and guardians. Information and instructions for staff have been provided through email, video, and direct communication from our Associate Superintendent and Director of Special Education. Supervisors and coordinators will continue to provide guidance through regular virtual meetings to ensure schools are supported and have clear guidelines. Special education meetings will continue to take place virtually to meet required IEP timelines and compliance requirements. We are making resources and strategies available on the Division webpage to assist staff and parents with students with the specific needs of our special learners. This includes resources for students assessing the general and adapted curriculum. Due to challenges related to the global pandemic and the governor's stay-at-home order, it will be necessary for our special education teams to adapt how we support our students. As we ensure the safety and well-being of our students, our local, state, and federal leaders recognize that services on IEPs and 504s will not be met in the same way they would have if schools were open. Our team members will continue to work to find alternative methods and positive proactive strategies to continue engagement in learning for our special education students. So as you can see from this plan, we do not have a change to the calendar proposed. I know there have been many questions regarding summer school and other enrichment. We are considering all options and will update the board as we are able to finalize those plans. Much of that will depend in part on the status of the pandemic and if we need to utilize primarily virtual or remote instruction, or if we can allow staff and students back into buildings. We will also develop plans to maximize the first few weeks of the new school year for potential review of learning material from this school year if needed. As I wrap this up, I want to remind the school board and the community that we will continue our robust communication of all of these plans in the days and weeks ahead. Thanks to our incredible communication staff, as well as our translations office, as you know, we have sent more than 26 updates to the community and nearly twice that many to the school board since March 13. These were also sent to all the home languages and through various platforms, including email, text, social media, and home phone, and we will continue to do so. I encourage our families and staff to wait until you see all this information before sending questions throughout the rest of this week. Please allow our school leaders time to digest all of this information, as well as for our teachers, until after spring break. Once you receive this information, we encourage students, parents, or guardians to contact their teacher or school, such as contacting your teacher or counselor through communications such as email, student view, or parent view. Employees should work through your principal or supervisor. I hope everyone is able to have a restful spring break next week at home. We will honor spring break for employees and families as planned. Please know that while most staff will be off next week as scheduled, school food and nutrition services will continue to serve meals during spring break. I want to conclude this evening by thanking everyone, all of our employees and school board, our families, and our students. This has truly been a team effort. Together, we continue to embrace the spirit of providing a world-class education. As we have worked on kindness initiatives this year, in fact, I celebrated Kindness Day this year with hundreds of students at Patriot High School. So please remember kindness matters, words matter, make kindness the norm. Please be kind to one another, show patience, support one another, and be willing to be flexible and patient. And that, while we must remain apart physically, we will get through this together in a collective, community spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. That was a comprehensive and appreciative appreciated by the board. I am off the screen because I'd rather have more of the board members on the screen, so I can see them. So if that's okay with you all, I would do that. I would like to also remind the board members to please mute your button if you're not talking. There was a little bit of rustling of papers. But Dr. Walts, I don't, I think the whole board would say that we are grateful for all the work you all are doing. I think what I'd like to do now is, because this was on for information, I'll rotate through the board members, and if the board members have any comments, quickly, just, you know, reserve it to a few comments or questions you have, recognizing that it would be difficult to answer all the questions that are going to be that Dr. Walts put up today, and there's hundreds of emails coming in every day to all of us about these specific issues, and recognizing that I think the staff is working through all of that. But I would like to just run through the board members here briefly. We'll start with Ms. Jackson. Do you have any comments?
I'd like to thank the superintendent for the comprehensive plan as well. It went into a lot of details. I do have questions from the community that may be addressed as the updates come up. So I was just thinking that I might just email any additional questions after reviewing the updates to avoid repeating myself, because I have questions about like special ed and how we, a special education case manager or teacher would implement some of the accommodations and, you know, manipulatives that we might use in a classroom. But I can email it, and maybe you've already addressed it. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jessie? Ms. Jessie, I think you're still on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's so comprehensive, it's overwhelming, to be honest with you. And I, it's just hard for me to ask the questions because there's so much information. I don't mean this as a criticism at all, but I would have rather been able to look at this comprehensive report prior to this evening, so that I could not consume time with questions. I guess my main question is, if the governor has set schools are closed until the end of the year, are teachers obligated to work during this period of time without any type of compensation, Dr. Walts? How does, how does this? How does, how does this work? Are they on their virtual, their virtual employees at this point? Could you explain that for me?
Dr. Walts?
Yes, two things. So they are compensated, so they are being fully compensated. The governor's order closed the schools, meaning the physical buildings, but the Virginia Department of Education still has set guidelines for a continuation of learning.
Okay. That, that was one question. And I looked online at some of the information that you have for students. There's quite a bit of virtual and those computers and access. I'm glad to see that we have used some of our funds to buy those computers. When do you think those computers will be available for students, and how, how do we determine the distribution?
So the initial ask is we're trying to collectively get them into the schools and starting at the high schools as quickly as possible. So in order to cover all of that, hopefully if we get the $5 million from the supervisors, we will be able to do that. The first order of the, the $5-plus million that we set aside has been made, but I do not have an end date for when we can expect arrival as we are competing with many, many other school divisions. But I can certainly ask staff to share any information that we get from the suppliers. We were able to attach to a bid that we already have that's accepted by, that's, it's already a part of our bid list in procurement from the state bid list. So if we get any additional information, we can send that to you.
Okay. The last question I have is that at some point, I tried to make notes of what you, that some, some, some student activities are going to be graded. And my question is, how do we determine whether or not that work was done without the assistance of a parent and/or someone? And then the other question is that when we look at student learning, we look at guided practice and, you know, the whole process, what happens to those students who don't have parents at home who can't support them with these activities? Have we considered those concerns?
So we're trying to use a variety of different platforms and ways in which we can reach those students. Teachers have already started doing that, and they've done some very creative things. We certainly understand that there are a lot of challenges in, in many, many of our homes. What, what was the very first question you asked?
I think the very first question I asked had to do with the grading and the third quarter.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Those grades are going to be a part of the grading process, which kind of lines up with the graduation. If you're a student that have failing grades or you need to improve, will all of that, will that be online kinds of opportunities for them to bring their grades up? And what happens if a student doesn't bring his grade up and he feels like I, I needed more support?
Yes.
My concern is, what happens when kids, these students are unsupervised and we're using, we're, we're using, we're giving them grades for their work at home?
So the grading is only for work that is turned in on or before March 13th? And again, following the guidance and the intention, I believe, of both the governor's office and the guidance of the Virginia Department of Education, the expectation is that students will receive help and assistance, support in learning, providing a continuation of learning and feedback on the work that they do, but not in the form of a grade. So whatever work that they would do or complete from now until the end of the grading period and through the end of the year would only be able to improve the students' grades. So we will literally be going in, especially starting with the seniors, and auditing each and every one of the seniors that were on track for graduation. And we will work with every student, again, I'm starting with the, it'll be all the students, but I'm starting with talking about the seniors because that's so critically important. But there are a lot of ways that you can demonstrate learning. Obviously, you know that as well as anyone with your years as a principal. And it may be something as, as simple as a screenshot of something that they did at home to demonstrate an understanding of how to do a particular math problem or problems that the teacher would use to demonstrate mastery of that particular concept and then use it to raise the grade. Again, any work that they do after March 13th, following the guidance of the Virginia Department of Education, will only be used to help the students improve their grade.
So and finally, we're, we're classroom teachers, regular classroom teachers involved in developing this comprehensive plan?
It's my understanding that we had people throughout the district, that was Ms. Goss, but she can send out information as to who all was involved in the development of the plan. But certainly, there were teachers as a part of it, yes.
Well, thank you very much. I, I think the plan is very comprehensive. I do have some concerns about the actual logistics of it and the implementation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Ralston, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank the superintendent. I think he has done a yeoman's job along with his staff and then all of, as that, you know, stands out deeply to know how much everyone cares. So I want to thank the superintendent, and I'm looking for this year to still turn out to be a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Wall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank the superintendent and all of the staff who have worked so hard on this plan. It's comprehensive, it's thoughtful, it's extensive, it's a lot to take in. I'm sure we're all going to be reading it over carefully. So thank you very much for all of your hard work, everybody who went above and beyond to work on this. My only comment would just be, you know, from the parent perspective, parents are going to need some support as well as we try to help our kids. I mean, I don't know if anybody's having experiences like I have this week, but it's been, you know, it's been a little rocky as far as like getting kids motivated because they too are feeling a lot of social emotional stress, absence from their friends, you know, things they're looking forward to that were taken away because of all of this. So parents are going to need to be patient, and parents are probably going to need some support. And so it's, it's a good experiment. I mean, we're all going to become homeschool, homeschool students somewhat in this challenge. But I really appreciate it, Dr. Walts, your staff, and everybody else for, for this thoughtful rollout. So I look forward to hearing more of the details and being able to study it a little bit. But I want to just say good luck to all the teachers and the students, principals, as we embark on this new adventure together.
Justin Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Walts, and your team. I know just through personal conversations with a number of them that you guys are working tirelessly around the clock in all aspects, whether it be finance, special ed, instructional support, you yourself and everyone. I know these are, these are unprecedented times. I was going to say this for my board comments, but it all relates to this. So I'm coming at this from the perspective of not only a board member, but a former teacher who's still certified to teach in Virginia, a full-time worker in the private sector, the husband of a teacher, and a special needs parent. This has been, these last couple of weeks have been extremely stressful times, and I can imagine how it's impacting families all over the county. I can imagine how it's impacting the parents, how it's impacting our teachers. And, and let me tell you, and I, every child is challenging, right? You know, and our neurotypical and general ed students and our others, you know, they are, having them home is definitely challenging. And I will tell you, as a special education parent, losing that structure and losing the routine and the support, and it's not just these couple of months, because everyone has to remember for a special needs kid, you're also adding on the summer months when they're out of direct instruction in the classroom. So for all those parents, God bless you. These, you know, I was just saying that there should be some Zoom support groups for special needs parents to talk to people, just because, you know, as we all know with the autism spectrum, no child is the same. And these are questions that my wife and I are like, you know, what do we do now? Do, you know, do we increase medication here? Do we try to do activities in this time of the day? Or, you know, so these are definitely things that are coming about. As a former teacher and as the husband of a teacher, I see definitely the stress of what this is having. You know, a lot of teachers are also parents, and as we know, the kids are home right now. So what is the balancing act? Because again, these are unprecedented times. We're not going to tell, you know, you're not going to say get, you know, daycare or childcare on you, that's all your, you know, solution. No, it's not. We're practicing social distancing and keeping everyone out of the public and within, you know, without 10 people. No, you're not going to put your kids in daycare. No, this is, again, something is a balancing act. And so as we're moving forward with this implementation of these phases, I ask, and I hope that our principals, because I'm assuming a lot of this will probably be site-based again, work with their teachers and are flexible with them, because again, you have kids in your house. You, you know, you're also managing in that balancing act and not only being a teacher for instruction, but you have your own kids to take care of. And a lot of this technology thing is also directly impacting at these homes. You might have two computers for a teacher, you know, parents who are teachers in their household, and they have to do their instruction, but then what are their kids going to use while this is happening? And so I know people are like literally blocking their schedules to try to make sure their kids are getting their instruction and that they're able to do some instruction. So it's crazy right now. So with that stress, with all that, I'm asking, and I hope, you know, Dr. Walts, I'm sure you're going to talk to your principals and convey to them about the flexibility of that. I want to talk a little bit more about technology, and I think this is great. I supported the one-to-one initiative, but it sounds like, again, we're rolling out some new platforms. And even existing platforms, there is a technology learning curve with this. You know, again, with time, time is so precious right now. I feel like by the end of the day, by nine o'clock, when my kids are falling asleep and, you know, my special needs son is not bouncing off the wall anymore, and we finally have a moment to ourselves to try to figure out what to do, I can't imagine then trying to get teachers to have to do research and then try to figure out, you know, how to use Zoom, you know, how to film your video on YouTube, how to do, you know, Canvas now. So I'm asking again for more flexibility and support in this area, you know, learning curves. Can we create a quick help center with easy guides, how to do simple things like set up a Zoom meeting and put preferences and settings on so that it's easy for people to use? Quick, again, guides, pre-recorded videos for people who can't attend these webinars that are going to be offered. I think they're a great option, these webinars, and I think that's amazing. But again, everyone's going to have very different schedules. Some people might be able to get up at seven o'clock in the morning before their kids get up. Other people, again, might not be able to do something till nine o'clock at night. So that would be helpful. Also, like, put the vendor support information out there. I mean, we're subscribing and paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for these tools. Make those contact support centers be responsible also for answering questions from teachers. That should be readily available, and so that way, if our tech, technology team has a backlog and their things will get busy, you know, our support service for all these different providers should be here to help our teachers as well. So I want to make sure that's available as we start, you know, putting and implementing new technology. We just have to have the support in place, again, the flexibility. Again, we are, people are stressed, I'm stressed, and I know our teachers, our parents, as echoed by my board members, the sentiments here. And then I think we need some clarity about what direction we're going when it comes to the fourth quarter. If we're saying grades are not going to account, what, you know, what, I understand about being accountable and making sure there is instruction happening, but will it be new instruction and new material? Will it be enriching activities? You know, how are we going to keep students motivated if we're saying these grades are not going to count to actually be active participants in this? So I think it's going to be a balancing act, and I know all these questions are not going to be answered right now. I know more information is coming forward. You know, I know, Dr. Walts, you just gave a very detailed and a long speech about new directives and new initiatives. So if we could kind of give, from all those key things, make a guide for new things for teachers to know moving forward and have those printed out and posted online, new things for parents moving forward, just so again, it's, it's digestible, and I know you're probably already doing this, but again, it's, it's just a lot to take in. And I think, again, these are uncharted waters. This is a whole new game that we're living in, and we have no idea what the future is. I see some experts saying that this could start all over again in November. So I think we just need to be prepared for a long battle with this, the virus, and, and really try to get things in place and try to have as many questions answered moving forward, because there's just a lot to take in here. And as I can just imagine being, you know, a parent or a teacher right now, who, we have a lot of audience members tuning in, just listening to that and being like, wait, what? So again, I, I think as we digest this, sit back, the next couple of days, I know spring break is coming, but the more information we can get out there, the better. And the support, again, not just again for teachers, but you know, this new technology, we can't assume every parent even knows how to join a Zoom link or access these Canvas or anything like that. So the quicker, easier we can get this out to people would be my recommendation. So I'm sorry, that was also some of my board matters, so that'll be short tonight. So I just wanted to put all that out there. So thank you, Dr. Latif.
So Dr. Latif, may I just have a brief response there?
Yes, sir.
So I do want to make a couple of things clear that are are all going to be working to assist with the many kinds of suggestions that you had. And again, the rollout is going to start taking place tomorrow, but we wanted to start with our school board. So again, if you look on whatever is your platform of choice, there will be detailed explanations tailor-made for teachers, for students, for staff, and I certainly take all of your points seriously. I also wanted to just go back, because I got a quick answer back here on a couple of other items. One is our goal for computers is to arrive in April and do the training and to be used by students in May. That's our goal. May is the goal. As for the question around the involvement, who was involved in helping create the instructional plan? Teachers who are instructional coaches, the PD specialists were all a part, and teachers based in schools and those who work with other teachers. So we got input from focus groups that also included school leaders. I think that catches us up on the questions.
Dr. Walts, can you hear me? Were there regular?
Ms. Jessie?
I'm sorry.
Can I, can I get through everybody first and, and then?
I was just following up on something. Go ahead.
Okay. We'll go to Ms., we'll go to, let me do Ms. Williams next, because we'll retain the alphabetical
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Did we get Ms. Wall? Yes, that's right. Okay.
We did.
Sorry about that. So yes, I, I would first like to start out by just really expressing, just, I really don't even have the words to thank Dr. Walts and his staff. It, it has been a full-scale effort by his entire staff, everyone included, from Dr. Walts himself, all the way down, as he mentioned, to our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, our janitorial, the teachers, all of the central office, food services. It has really just been a tremendous effort that I personally have seen. I know I have done my fair share of emailing and texting and calling. I'm not quite sure when they sleep, and they also have families as well. And I just think it is absolutely amazing, the amount of work that they have been able to do in such a short period of time. Just so the general public is a little bit more aware of what I'm saying, what I, what I mean when I say that, and that is that they not only have to prepare things for our school division based upon their set of knowledge, but they also have to take in what is coming down at every level and incorporate that, meaning whatever federal changes there are, whatever state changes there are, whatever changes that are made from our local county government that impact schools. And as we all know, those things seem to change daily. The fact that we have not, as a school division, had to roll back initiatives, go counter to advice that's already, that we've already put out there, I just think is absolutely amazing. The communication, the lines of communication that opened from Dr. Walts and his entire staff to our parents, to us as board members, is just phenomenal, and I really cannot express the amount of gratitude and appreciation I have for that. I know I myself have been on many calls with individuals that I didn't even think knew who I was, and now they're reaching out to school officials for our input, and I'm just so very humbled and honored to be a part of this school division at this time. I know that we can't please everybody all of the time. That's just how life is as it goes. But I- But I do think that we have done a fantastic job in response to this crisis as it's just unfolded for us at rapid speed. I do also want to mention, I really appreciate the forward thinking and planning by Dr. Waltz and his staff and purchasing his computers for acknowledging that there is a procurement system and a set of protocols that we do have to use. Even though that we are in crisis, I think it's important for the public to understand those kinds of things are still in existence. There's been some lifting due to emergency measures at the state level, when you talk about, or the federal level, when you talk about who we can feed and when we can feed them and who's able to do those things. But all of our other practices are still applicable. So to, to understand that and to make those decisions in the best interest of our student and our Prince William County families and the foresight that has been shown, I think is tremendously wise and I appreciate that. I also like to thank you, Dr. Waltz and your staff for acknowledging all of our special groups. I've gotten a lot of comments from every source imaginable, from all sorts of different types of Prince William County school families. And I really appreciate you taking the time to address them. I, I think the timing is really good for our meeting and for your comments, because I think we really do, as parents, as school board members, individuals with children, need this time to really digest everything that you've said, because I know I've received a lot of questions about information that's already posted. It's just coming out really, really fast. And as a parent myself, I understand how it is to try to manage school time, meeting time, instruction time. I'm not a teacher, far from it. I don't know if anybody just saw a minute ago, there were a few little dreads popping up here in the corner because I had a visitor. So I understand what it's like to be a parent and try to conduct business and, and you have your children and you've said to them, you know, a thousand times, hey, mommy needs to do this and this. And they're still like, yeah, but since you're here and I love you and whatever the case may be for the moment. I really appreciate the, just the general patience that I've seen expressed by our community members. I know it can be hard for all of us. We're all trying to figure out what to do, especially those of us who are not as blessed and fortunate to have been teachers before. I just can't say to all, to everyone watching enough that we're all doing a good job. We're all still here. It may not feel like it every minute of the day. I know I have my moments. But I think that it's a good thing to be reminded that we're all in this together, even though we may have a different experience and feel a little differently as we are here locked in our houses in some fashion. But we all are in this together. I just want to thank the community too, because I've seen a number of tweets and Facebook groups pop up where there's a lot of support. I know, just to mention one, Ms. Yokio Dove runs at Prince William County Schools, Prince William County Special Education Site on Facebook. And to see all of the parents and the different community members offering resources to each other, being able to use that as a tool to communicate ideas to board members so that we can then in turn be a channel to the staff, I think is a great example of one of the ways that we've been able to come together. I just really thank you a lot. And I'm sure there'll be more questions. I would encourage the public as they do take this time out to then email us so that we can then in turn cycle those, those questions on the staff. But again, my deepest and sincerest heartfelt thanks for all of the work that you have put in on behalf of this division. And to have been a clear and as communicative as you have been is really fantastic. I also appreciate the fact that you are not putting any additional work and on our students that are required, because that's really important. We have a lot of students and mental health is, is something that's a frequent topic. Students or parents both are very worried. And I think you've done a good job of reassuring them about these anxieties with new work and how to reach and access professionals if are needed. I just really appreciate everything you've done and I look forward to digesting what you have submitted today and all the future communications that will come out in the days and weeks ahead. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I echo everyone else who has said they're really appreciative to the staff and superintendent and the staff and how hard you all have been working. I'm sure you must be exhausted. And I know this is just the first part of it. So I'm grateful for all the questions you've answered and all of the things that you're doing to make sure that we are continuing education. I'm going to be the voice of optimism here. I know it bothers some people that we aren't going to be getting grades for the fourth quarter, but this is an opportunity for students to maybe take some risks and learning in a different way. Think of it as a place to get safe feedback that isn't going to negatively affect you later on. It's a place of growth. I also have been spending a lot of time with parents who keep saying, I'm not a teacher. And it's okay. I get it. I'm not a math teacher. I am a teacher, but I, my daughter's in geometry, so I can't help her as much. But I want to remind the parents that we, we aren't expecting people to suddenly become homeschoolers. We are all in crisis schooling right now, pretty much all of us, right? The entire country. So parents, just take that pressure off. I believe in the resiliency of our children. I believe in the resiliency of our community. And right now, we just need to make sure that everyone's safe and everyone's healthy. And we can get back to learning and back to all these things when this is all over. I also believe that, I know this is a lot to do distance learning. As a teacher, I'm struggling with trying to figure out how to take the things that I do best in my classroom into a virtual place. And it's hard. And as a professional, I feel like this is not, this is not what I want to be doing or how I want to be doing it. So we're all feeling something. So I'm going to go back to that optimism for just a second. I believe in the resiliency of our students. They're going to be okay. They're not going to be as behind as anyone's worried. They're going to be okay. I believe in the resiliency of our community. We'll take care of each other. And I believe in the resiliency of our professionals who are making sure our kids are fed, making sure our kids are learning, making sure our teachers are supported. And that's pretty much it. I'm going to read through all these comments. And if I have questions, I will email them later. But I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that we got this. It's going to be okay. It's not going to be easy, but we got this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. I want to make a note that Ben Kim, our student, has been on the call as well. His camera is broken, so unfortunately, Mr. Kim, we can't, we can't see your lovely face. But I'd like to have Ben give some thoughts. At this point, I think that would be a good time to hear from him, especially since we heard from the superintendent on his comprehensive plan. And Ben, this could be your, your, your time to sort of give us the comments of what the students feel and what you've heard.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Latif. Does my mic work?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So yeah, I just want to thank all of you guys. They're really comprehensive and my brain's also kind of exploding right now. I thought I might just give an update on a student's point of view, high school at least, and my own point of view. So as a student, you know, taking all these classes and there's a lot of concern about standardized testing, IB and AP exams, et cetera, GPA, you know, big deal. So students are a bit concerned, feeling a little bit concerned about that. But, you know, we've been reached out to, me personally, by a lot of teachers. And we had, you had a Zoom conference today and it was good to see everyone. It was uplifting hearing, seeing my teacher, hearing my classmates who were discussing texts. And me, we as a student senate, we had a couple of Zoom meetings as well with Mr. Gervon and Ms. Viola. We talked about, you know, what can we as a senate do? We talked about a lot of things. One of the ideas that we came up with to maybe help students, you know, connect with one another, keep that social stimulus. It was having like a student senate, our own website. So that's in the making, hopefully that it gets approved. That, so it's like independent of Prince William County. And it's going to, we hope that's going to be a place where students can write, senators can write blogs, students too, have a forum for, you know, like, what are we going to do about this and this and whatnot? But it's in the making, places to give advice about unemployment, you know, if you got laid off or college and et cetera. And one of the big things that we as a senate are working on right now is the, the senior tribute. Dr. Waltz was talking a little bit about that. We want to somehow celebrate the senior class, you know, we feel pretty bad for them. I myself as a junior, but, so we're going to collect a bunch of pictures and videos and hopefully be able to post it as like a mass tribute. So we're looking forward to doing that. Also, on the topic of learning, as we enter, we're after spring break, a phase of at-home learning. The senate was talking about this in our Zoom meeting about, you know, what do we, what type of learning do we want to see assigned from the division? We want to see meaningful learning. So I know Dr. Waltz is against busy work and I myself am too. I think that meaningful learning, like having seminars on Zoom or creative projects or personal projects where kids get to try to teach themselves things like autodidactism or something, or a new language like what I'm doing. Yeah, it is a great period of risk-taking for students and a lot of people could really grow out of this. And so this is not, doesn't have to be a bad time, even though it's a weird time for us students and a lot of things will, will never be the same. You know, we can all grow a little bit. So those are just some of my thoughts on what the senate is doing and what, how I myself feel about it. So I'm open to any question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. And I don't, I don't know if any of us can imagine the shoes you're in and what you guys are going through. This affects you all tremendously. And, you know, the more we hear from you and as you collect information and data from your friends and colleagues and students across the school division, please don't hesitate to share that with us. And I think all of us on the school board are glad to have you as part of our school board and you and Tahira for all the work you're doing and what you're going to do to help us succeed with this year, as I think Ms. Zargarpur said, you know, we'll get through this. Dr. Waltz, do you have any comments regarding our students' statements?
I just have to say again, I'm just so impressed by your maturity and your thoughtfulness and the way in which you spoke from the heart, but also with a positive, such a positive leadership in your thinking. I'm so impressed by that. Thank you for sharing some of the positive things that you are doing and a reminder of things that I've said again and again and again about, you know, learning should be fun. It should be enjoyable. Reading, reading material at an appropriate level, both fiction and nonfiction, working on projects that are of interest to you, especially that go across content areas and the subjects that you're taking. And I love the idea about the Zoom seminars on Zoom. I think you probably do a Socratic circle in that too. But those are very, very important. There's a lot of ways to assess student learning without giving tests. So, or grading things, you can, when you think about what children learn before they ever set one day in school, just in the first few weeks and months and years of their life, they're learning hundreds of thousands of things and nobody's giving them a letter grade, but they get lots of feedback on, oh, you're doing great. You're almost walking and that kind of thing. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness and we will work to continue to try to make this as pleasant of an experience and continue your learning without it being overwhelming or onerous or adding to your stress. Thank you so much.
I will just make my comments very brief. You know, Dr. Waltz, thank you. Extensive remarks. A lot for all of us to work through. And over the next few days, I look forward to seeing what all of you put out. Thirty years ago, I graduated high school. I will be having my 30-year high school reunion. And when you, when you look back at what your final few months were, they are some of the most memorable moments in anyone's, I think, life. And so for my seniors and our seniors, I, my heart goes out to you, but I have the utmost confidence that this clearly will be memorable and that also you're going to make the most of it. And so we're going to do everything we can to help you with that. Number two, I, like Dr. Waltz just mentioned, you know, many of what we do in education is stymied in mid-20th century, 1900 sort of traditions. I think if we want to look for the silver lining of what is happening to us is we're going to try some new things. Some of these new things are going to have remarkable, I think, outcomes. And I'm excited by it and I'm excited by the creativity that's going to go on with our teachers and our staff and the enthusiasm I've already seen with some of our teachers on what they're going to do in helping learning. I want the school board and Dr. Waltz and all of us to think that we still have to have an eye on the fall. The concern about whether we start school on time is a concern. That is, you know, clearly something that as we listen to our leaders at the federal level and the state level, we, there's so much uncertainty. So all of us, as we plan, we need to plan about what we think to do for the fall. One of the reasons we wanted to go one-to-one is partly because we don't want to be caught with our pants down again by not having computers for our students in the fall and one-to-one devices. So we will work towards that. And I'm, I'm glad to hear Dr. Waltz's so far plan and the administration's plan. And as Jen Wall points out, she has children in the school division and she knows and what parents are going through. I have four kids in the school division, one in elementary, one in middle school and two in high school. And so I'm struggling along with all the parents out there, trying to manage this. And I want you all to know that all the school board members are reading their emails. They're forwarding them to the administration. All of your concerns frankly are our concerns. And I can tell you that Dr. Waltz and his team have put in 18-hour days just going through a lot of what's coming in and trying to put out the best we can. There isn't any perfect way to do this. There's, there's certainly wrong ways to do this, but I believe we're going to do the best we can with what we have and we're going to constantly work to make it better every day. And I can't thank you enough, Dr. Waltz. I think for the board members, you know, we didn't have in the agenda, actual board matters time, but I think we should do that with like maybe a minute after we finish some of the other business that is, that is here on the, on the schedule. We can go and do board matters where we do a round robin and each of you can sort of make some comments if that's okay. We need to go to the adoption of the consent agenda, which is 6.01. Ms. Williams, would you please read the motion?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The, I move that the Prince William County School Board approved the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wall, seconds, the motion. Any discussion? Okay, without discussion, I'll take the roll call. We'll do this in the same order as we did before. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Let the record show Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Let the record show Ms. Jessie votes yes. Dr. Latif, I will vote yes. Please let the record reflect that. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilk, how do, or let the record reflect, Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. And Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Excellent. So that passes unanimously. Ms. McGowan, are we voting on 602 and 603 separately or is that all part of 601? I'm looking at board docs, so I'm a little bit confused.
There is no, there is no, there are no board matters on this evening because board members can only speak in an emergency meeting to emergency items, which the board has been doing.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you for that, Ms. McGowan. Okay, so now did, please correct me here. I'm looking at the adoption of the consent agenda. That's all we had to do or do I have to vote separately on 602 and 603?
You've already voted on 601, correct?
And that includes, I think, 602 and three, because I'm looking at my board docs on the computer, which is different than my script for tonight.
That's correct. It's approval, it's approval of two, two sets of minutes. You've already voted on that.
Okay, so I'm going to read, this is the time we normally do citizens' comments, so due to So, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and for those of you who joined us late, we mentioned this earlier, "The directives of federal and state governmental authorities regarding the need for social distancing and the resulting need for the school board to conduct this meeting electronically, the school board will temporarily waive the provisions of Policy 134, citizen participation, which provide for citizen comment time during board meetings. Members of the public are encouraged to communicate with the board through other methods, including email, until such time as the school board is able to resume regular meetings." At this time on the agenda, superintendent's time. Dr. Waltz, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. It's actually some good news, and it's, my superintendent's time is considerably shorter than the earlier part of the agenda. So, with that in mind, this is related to the coronavirus. Good evening. The outstanding educators reception, which was originally scheduled for last week, is one of many events that we had to cancel due to the COVID-19 situation. Just had to click on my camera there again. Unfortunately, we did not have the opportunity to recognize our nominees for Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year, and all of those teachers who wore national, earned National Board Certification. So, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate all of these educators publicly for their dedication to our students. I also want to, for the first time, share the names of our division-wide Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year. Congratulations to our Teacher of the Year, Matthew Grimsley. Mr. Grimsley is a technology, education, and science teacher at Independence Non-Traditional School. He has worked for PWCS since 2008, and he created Independence Non-Traditional's first career and technic, technology education program, otherwise known as CTE. He has also created new course offerings, unique learning opportunities, and sustainability programs for the most underserved students in PWCS. He continuously facilitates new instructional opportunities that benefit students and peers, and has established numerous programs to better the environment and community. Congratulations, Mr. Grimsley. And now, congratulations to our division-wide Principal of the Year, Neil Beach. Mr. Beach is serving in his ninth year as Principal of Osmond Park High School after serving for three years in an assistant principal role. He has worked for PWCS since 2001. It was recently named as the principal for the 13th high school. In 2019, Mr. Beach was named the Virginia Association of School Librarians, VAA SL State Principal of the Year. He has also pioneered instructional programs and school improvement efforts at Osmond Park, which have exponentially increased enrollment rates, graduation rates, test scores, teacher satisfaction, teacher satisfaction, and professional development. So, again, thanks to Mr. Beach. And finally, I just want to remind everyone, I encourage our families and staff to please wait until you receive all the information about the rollout of tonight over the next few days. And please allow our school leaders time to digest all this information, as well as our teachers, until after spring break. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. I'm going to, now, at this point, we will be adjourning to closed session. So, for the public who is with us, it is, I'm not clear on how long our closed session will take, but we will come back after closed session to this, to this go-to meeting to certify that we did our closed session appropriately. And that's the only business we'll have once we come out of closed session. So, most of the meeting, if the public is watching, has been accomplished. We will come out and certify closed session. At this point, the board members know how to go into closed session. What I would request, because we've been here two hours now, it is 8:58. Let us reconvene in the closed session, uh, meeting at 9:05. Okay? All right. So, I will be, I would ask the, I know our organizers know how to turn us off, and then everyone knows how to go to closed session.
Don't we have to have a motion to enter closed session?
Oh, yes. Hold on. I am so sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First, you need approval of the closed session consent agenda, and then the motion to enter closed session.
My God, I'm so sorry. I got tied up here. All right, we need, I'm sorry. So, let us, is everybody back on?
Yes.
Do I have everybody on? Jason, is everybody on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's left anywhere.
Okay, fantastic. Excellent. Sorry, my apologies. I got ahead of myself. We do need a motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams, would you please read us?
Mr. Chairman, first, you need approval of the closed session consent agenda.
Correct.
No, closed session agenda, not the consent agenda.
It's a closed session agenda.
Okay, good. Ms. Ms. Williams, can you read us? So, that'll be, I'm sorry, 10.02, the approval of the closed session agenda.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended, and further certify these agenda items are necessary to address the pandemic disaster and to assure the continuity of government and that the normal procedures cannot be followed.
Do I, do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes, I guess, I will take the, any discussion. Okay, we'll do the roll call. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Let the record reflect that. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Let the record reflect. Mr. Latif, I will vote yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk, how do you, let the, Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Ms. Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. We will move now, my deepest apologies, to the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams, can you read us that motion, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss the performance of employee T20-47 as it relates to the current state of emergency under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. Two, to discuss and consult with Division Counsel regarding legal matters involving board operations and the current state of emergency under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A78 and 19. And, three, to consult with Division Counsel regarding legal issues germane to the provision of special education services during the COVID-19 crisis and in regard to the threatened litigation under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 and 8.
Do I have a second?
Second. I'll second up.
Ms. Ms. Jen Wall seconds that motion. Any discussion? Okay, without any discussion, then we will move to the roll call. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. That is unanimous to go, approval to go into closed session. So, I'll adjust the time. Let's meet in closed session at 9:10. Again, thank you to the public. If you don't happen to be on here afterwards, please forgive us for any mishaps in this meeting. Thank you for your patience and continue to communicate with all of us. I will see you all at 9:10. Thank you. I don't know about their, their wallet. Okay, good. Let's, Ms. Williams, can you read the motion?
Absolutely. I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize the Chairman at Large to send a letter to Governor Northam and the FOIA Council supporting Senator Stewart's request for action to allow public bodies to conduct routine business through electronic means during the state of emergency arising out of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Jessie seconds that. We will go through, any discussion? Okay, great. Let's call, I'll do the roll call again, and we'll do it just like we voted earlier. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Wall, Ms. Wall voted yes. Ms. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Outstanding. That passes unanimously. We'll move on to the next motion. A motion's in order. Ms. Williams.
Uh...
It's a closed session certification.
There you go. I over-tapped on my mute. Sorry about that. The recommended action, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-7312, the closed session of Prince, of the Prince William County School Board meeting of April 1, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And, two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard and, and were considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Jessie seconds. Let the record reflect that. We will have any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, we will take the roll call vote again. We'll start with Ms. Jackson. How do you vote?
Yes.
Jackson votes yes. Let the record reflect that. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Let the record reflect. Ms. Dr. Latif will vote yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, by Ms. Ralston. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. And Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. She votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote? Ms. Zargarpur?
She's gone.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll assume Ms. Zargarpur voted yes, but we'll call that 7 to 0 since I can't hear her, or one abstention. Ms. Urban, please record that. I want to, I think that should be it. I want to thank our IT people, Mr. Stevenson, Jason, and Mr. Pond, Howard Pond, and thank Ms. Wall, Ms. Urban, or Ms. Urban and Ms. Simpson. I want to thank all of our support staff, Claudia Cartagena, and, and all of our, our legal counsel for all the work you guys put into getting this meeting to go off in an incredible way. And that will be the end of the night. Stay safe and God bless all of you. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Dr. Latif.
Yes.
Can, Ms. Roth and I thank John Jenkins. He worked with us all afternoon to make sure we were doing everything properly. He's John, John Jenkins. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Wonderful. Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you all.
You.
Bye.